...of expertise specifically related to many of the MPT issues that you've been discussing. And I just want to first thank our panelists here, which I think is a really great group and really should be a really lively discussion about a lot of different issues that are related to MPT. I'll just introduce them briefly. Immediately to my left, Corey Dingman, who's a real estate appraiser with Duncan &amp; Brown, Bill Morris as a real estate lender with Home Federal Bank, John Texter is with Essex General Construction, Rob Bennett is with Bennett Management Company and developer and manager of multi-unit housing and affordable housing, and Mia Nelson with 1,000 Friends of Oregon and member of the Envision Eugene Technical Resource Group. We have no formal script, but I've asked each to kind of further introduce themselves and just spend a minute or two to take some time to make some opening comments. And then we'll just open up the remaining meeting for discussion and questions that you might have. So with that, I will just start with Corey, and maybe you guys can go down the line.
Thank you very much. And welcome to you all.
Thanks. My name's Corey Dingman. I'm a commercial appraiser at Duncan &amp; Brown. I've been appraising apartments, many of the campus housing that have been going up over the past 10 to 15 years I've been doing this. I would say where I can help in this is discussions about financial feasibility, what kind of market rent levels are required to make a project financially feasible expenses, and how MPT and any additional requirements may affect that financial feasibility.
My name's Bill Morris. I'm with Home Federal Bank. Prior to that, I was with Liberty Bank for 26 years. I'm a vice president in charge of commercial real estate lending. I financed five or maybe six MPT projects, I think all but one near campus over the past many years, I think the first one in 1996. And I can speak somewhat to feasibility, but also any details regarding financing requirements, debt coverage ratios, loan-to-value ratios, those kind of issues. That's me.
My name's John Texter. I'm president of Essex General Construction. We've built several of the taller student housing projects at the university area. We like to think we're raising the students up to a higher level typically. So, yeah, I can speak to the resources available and also speak using local contractors, that kind of thing is pretty much where my expertise is.
I'm Rob Bennett. I'm part of a family business that's been operating in Eugene for 40 years or so. We do have some different responsibilities. We are the general partner and the operating partner for the downtown athletic club. We've done a number of building projects in Eugene and other communities, from historic renovation to new suburban construction. We think we have a pretty good idea of what it takes to encourage development downtown. We think housing is the most difficult of all kinds of downtown development, so we hope to contribute in that kind of discussion.
Hi, I'm Mia Nelson, and I work with 1,000 Friends of Oregon. And I am just going to speak about my experience on the Technical Resource Group, which was a subcommittee of Envision Eugene, and we met every week for, I think, a year. And I'm going to talk about what we learned about not only the need for multifamily housing, but Eugene's land supply, the places we have to put that, and the feasibility that we found really didn't exist for doing that with redevelopment, even though that was the city's goal, was to meet a large part of that need with redevelopment.
So, you know, there's a couple of options. We could ask them to make some general comments about their experiences in the market and issues related to MPT, or we could start asking questions.
I think it would be great to hear from them first about their experience and anything that they think we should hear, and then we can ask questions.
I guess I'll go first here. My experience with MPT has been primarily campus-related due to that's where, you know, most of the projects have been happening. And that was due to it was financially feasible to build in the campus area, and it has not been in the rest of Eugene. The, you know, I see the primary benefits of a MPT program as A) making projects financially feasible, but B) spurring redevelopment in areas that maybe have substandard housing and low rents. The way it's worked on campus has been it hasn't in itself spurred redevelopment because of the way it's been implemented. Ideally, I think that a project, well, the market has spurred redevelopment because rents got high enough for people to build with or without a MPT. People did not know if they could get a MPT when they would buy a project for redevelopment because it had to be approved by council, and they had to provide, you know, plans for what that would be. And what I saw in reviewing sale prices of land is people weren't paying more for land in a MPT area and not a MPT area, such as, you know, we heard of a lot of people complaining, hey, people are building on 18th and 19th, and that's outside the zone, but West University's getting, you know, they're building in West University also, so it must be financially feasible in both places. Well, that was due to people not having an assurance that they could get this exemption until it went to council. I know that, you know, most of them were approved, all the ones I believe came to council were approved, but there was other ones that were pulled prior to getting to that vote. I think in other parts of Eugene, it can help to close that gap of financial feasibility, but there are many areas where it's going to be difficult to be, to make a project work even with a property tax exemption. And I did a quick review before I came here, and if you take the value of the tax exemption, it's close to raising the rent on a project by, say, $25 to $50 per bedroom. So you can say on a project with an exemption, the owner will be getting a $25 to $50 per bedroom benefit compared to one without the exemption. And that will make a project more financially feasible, but in certain parts of town, they're still not going to be financially feasible. And things to consider in this is the more requirements that are put on that take away from that benefit, the less the financial feasibility is going to be there. And in my view, you know, I see this as being a very, kind of a, I don't see this being able to address each, you know, project equally, because a lot of these are redevelopment projects. And so, you know, if you have a MPT on a piece of bare land, it's going to provide more benefit than on one where someone has to tear down existing improvements that are creating value. And I think, you know, ideally, well, it's just, it's kind of a blunt tool, really. But I guess that's where we're all in for now.
I think all the MPT projects that I financed were redevelopment. And when we look at a new project, well, when we look at a MPT project, it just adds another layer of our underwriting. We look at loan-to-value ratio with and without MPT. We look at debt coverage ratio with and without MPT. We look at loan-to-cost ratio with and without, well, MPT doesn't affect cost. And I went back and I looked at the two most recent ones that we did, and they were both very, very, very tight with the MPT. And so we made, you've got to remember lenders are motivated by various things, like getting money out on the street and who are, what's the credibility of our borrower and the financial strength and how much cash they've got into the project. Last two that we did, we made a few exceptions, even with MPT. One was a pretty much a break-even at when they pound the last nail and they rent the last unit. That value, per Corey, is pretty much equal to cost, even with the MPT advantage, which is a 10-year discounted cash flow analysis that you go through. Right. And the one we most recently did was actually underwater, where the cost to build the project exceeded its market value. So you'd ask, like we asked, why would you build it? When you pound the last nail, you've lost money essentially. The reason why is because this was several years ago, and rents were on the uptake, these were both campus, and they're betting on the come, so to speak, and plus they had sizable, we'll only go to a certain dollar amount, a certain percentage. And so if it costs more than that, I mean, it will cost more than that on these two examples, all it means is the owner, the developer, is coming in with more cash out of his pocket. If we wouldn't have had MPT on these last two projects, they would not have been built. I assure you that. Because the several hundred thousand dollar in value from Corey attributed to MPT made us push our loan-to-value or let us push our loan-to-value up to the point where there was sufficient funds with the borrower's equity. So that's kind of my take on this.
I think I can speak to the local hiring issue and things like that. And we've built both MPT and non-MPT projects for mostly student housing, but also some affordable and housing. One thing we've noticed since 2007, 2008 is the construction resources available are very limited these days. It's very easy to run our local subcontractors out of resources. I've looked at our past projects, and typically, we are, I'd say 80% of the people that we use are local, from the Eugene-Springfield area. And then occasionally, we have to go to the Portland area for some of the larger subcontractors. But as construction ramps up, we're seeing this as a bigger and bigger issue, where we'll have to cast our net a little wider to fulfill the demand that's here. And it's not that people changed from being carpenters and plumbers to being grocery checkers or something like that, it's they left the area and they're no longer here. Hopefully, they'll come back in, and that will even itself out and change, but that's certainly an issue with this. Defining what local is is also kind of a challenge, because many, many people in the construction industry move around quite a bit, so it's not unusual for somebody in Salem to come to Eugene, and then three weeks later, they're working up in the Portland area, too. So how local gets defined is probably going to be something of a concern. I guess the other thing is how you monitor this, is because when MPT is given, often none of the subcontractors have been chosen at this time. So you can mandate it, I suppose, or go back and verify it in the future, but I'd say that's definitely going to be something, a management piece that has to be undertaken, and there's obviously resources and costs associated with that. Thanks.
We actually have never done a MPT project, but, and so I think I'd like to particularly limit my comments to downtown, because we do know what costs are downtown. And I would just repeat that, doing a straight-up housing project downtown is, in my view, more difficult than any place in the community and will be for some time, and can't proceed without, in my view today, as much help as the project can get. You know, those are just words. You know, I, there's no doubt in my mind, having worked very closely downtown on development projects, that, you know, Mike and Denny can analyze the numbers with anybody. But it could be helpful, both to the council and to the community, to have an advisory group that is familiar with real estate projects, sort of look at the individual projects as they come before you. You know, you make the final decision, but you get an independent, small advisory group to look at the numbers. I think what you're going to find is that offering a full MPT is going to be needed 100% of the time for the foreseeable future for downtown housing projects. You can, you know, write an ordinance that, you know, allows for some incentives for some community goals that you would like to see, because there may come a time when it's much easier. I hope that time comes. But I think, for now, I think you're going to find that it's very difficult to ask for additional considerations, offering a lower MPT timeframe to begin with. So I hope the program continues. I'm a downtown person, so you forgive me that, but I hope very much that you will see fit to continue the effort and that you'll continue to support what is going on downtown now. In all the years that I've been downtown, every day, I have never seen more hope and positive things going on. So thank you for supporting us.
So some of what I'm going to say you have probably heard before from me and from staff, but in the TRG, we spent a lot of time trying to match up the calculated need for new housing with Eugene's land supply. And as you know, when we looked at the multifamily demand and compared that to the land supply inside the UGB now, even considering the historical redevelopment rate that naturally happens, we were short. We did not have enough land to accommodate the need. And so we set about to try to figure out how the extra redevelopment that was going to be needed to accommodate that could actually occur. And Rob and Hostick put together a tool for us, and I think you have had a presentation about that, but it was a very fascinating experience for me and sobering as well, because his tool looked at the actual land values and improvement values on specific parcels in Eugene on a citywide level, and then looked at the achievable pricing that could be had if those were redeveloped. And basically, the spreadsheet asked, does it pencil? And I was very disheartened by the results, which were basically it doesn't pencil almost anywhere in Eugene to do redevelopment. And a couple of exceptions were the model showed that student housing close in to the university did pencil, and surprise, we know that, but the model did show that, as long as it's close enough, it did pencil on its own and wouldn't need MPT. The other thing that penciled was medical office. And sure enough, you look on Coburg Road and you see the Slocum and the Tan, those were both redevelopment projects, they penciled, they didn't need assistance. But everywhere else, it was pretty bad. And we also looked at what would happen if, say, MX went in on certain areas and there was a boost in pricing, there's some evidence that that can trigger a 10% to 20% increase in achievable pricing. I was very disappointed to see that even that wasn't enough. Most places, Coburg Road was an exception, that that was near the tipping point, and that boost would be enough, but West Eugene wasn't close. And that was very disappointing for me, and it made me realize that even with MX, there was going to have to be some extras put in, and I think downtown is another area that needs support. And the attractiveness of MPT doesn't actually require a cash outlay from the city, it's not the same as giving a direct subsidy or waiving SDC fees. And so that exercise showed me that MPT or something is probably going to be needed to achieve these redevelopment goals. I will say, when I saw the draft proposal, the thing that alarmed me the most was the idea of cutting this off at 1,600 units. And the reason it did is I have long thought that the multifamily demand that we're shooting for is way too low for two reasons. One, the population forecast that Eugene has been given to work with by the county assumed that a very large proportion of growth was going to go to outlying communities, much less than Eugene has, Eugene's capture share is much less than it has been historically. And I don't think that that's accurate, I think that that sort of predated the switch away from all the driving. And there are some strong trends that show reurbanization trend. So I think right there, right out of the gate, you're underestimating the actual population you're probably going to have to deal with, and you have to plan that way, but know that it's probably the job is bigger than that. And the other factor is the housing mix that the council is currently working with, I think also underestimates the multifamily demand for the future. So you put those two together, and I think if you think the job is only to accommodate 1,600 new units on multifamily, it could be 10,000. I think the job could be much bigger than we think. And the only alternative, if we aren't going to meet this demand with redevelopment, is a UGB expansion, but that's not really a solution either, because you don't, multifamily at the outskirts of town isn't, you know, viable the way that it is if it's in the core. So I would say MPT is really important, just make sure that it's targeted to encourage the development that you want, both the kind and the location. And then, once you know that it meets your standards, I would echo what is said, you need to make it as simple as possible, because some of these areas are so close, so far from penciling, that they're going to need all the help they can get and not impediments.
Thank you for that. Ready for some questions? Okay, so I've got George Brown and then Mike.
Okay. My first question is for Mr. Dingman. You mentioned that there were parts of town where it's not financially feasible, but could you tell us what those parts of town are in your opinion?
Well, much like Mia said, pretty much anywhere but campus is not financially feasible to, for new construction of apartments. We are seeing some going in, way out Coburg Road, out in the Crescent area, there's a developer from Salem building some there, and there's a local developer building some others. I can't speak to the financial feasibility of those. They are, again, you know, they're suburban, you know, walk-up apartments like we saw a lot of built in the late 90s. I think, you know, developers are thinking that we're starting to turn a corner in this economy, and people oftentimes build in advance of that, and that's what I think is probably going on there.
Okay. And how long has this situation obtained? How long has this been going on, would you say?
In terms of-
How many years?
Of non-financial feasibility? Well, last time we saw a number of new complexes built, and that would have been Valley River Villages and the, you know, Chase Gardens and those type of projects. There's been a few way out west Eugene that were built in the late 90s, early 2000s also, but it's been fairly limited for a community of our size, and I think that's due to low achievable rents and increasing construction costs.
Okay. Well, I just noticed in my ward that that's not true. I mean, I've seen some apartments being built on South Willamette Street, and a few years ago, there was an enormous senior complex built across from Woodfield Station, so I think that kind of contradicts some of the things-
Well, let me address that. Senior housing is a completely different model than what we're talking about, and those South Willamette Street ones were built by a developer that targeted students. So it's close enough to campus that, you know, the campus demand has been mushrooming out. I mean, you look at Capstone Downtown, you look at, you know, all the new, anything near campus, that's what they're targeting, because those rents will justify new construction. And I consider that Willamette Street area, campus fringe area, so I, you know, I would think that.
Okay, thanks. My next question's for Mr. Morris. You mentioned a, one of your projects that you financed was underwater, and you asked why would they do it? If it's going to be, if you're going to go underwater, why did they do it? Were they being speculative on an increase in student enrollment?
Yeah, I guess you could call it speculative. As I mentioned, when the project's done and it's fully absorbed, the appraised value from Corey or another appraisal, that value is less than, in some cases, in the last case I mentioned, less than the cost. And so the developer, like I said, they're betting on a long-term investment with increasing rents. And they'll take a hit today for a year or two or whatever, until those rents move up or rates come, interest rates come down, they refinance, a few things could happen to start making a return, making a return. And regarding the Willamette, there's units down on 24th Street, I think it's right at 24th Montgomery.
Yeah.
And maybe that's what you're refi-
That's what I'm refi-
Yeah, I'm familiar with-
There's three projects there that have been built just really recently.
Yeah, well, one of them, the owner, developer, or the owner, has, he's, the dirt has been, well, there's a couple houses and some units on there, he's owned that for years and years and years, so his basis going in is very low. I didn't finance that project, but I know the developer well. And that's really why, I mean, he went for it because his land cost was so low. We're financing 20 units now on Coburg Road that are under construction just south of Calhoun, on the east side of Calhoun. And the same, the same thing is true. The land, it was an assemblage of parcels, was in the developer's ownership for many, many years. So again, his basis was very low. Even with that, I did, I am financing those, so I know the details, even with that low basis on the land, it's a break-even. It's a break-even. Also, what goes into it is, I mean, the quality of materials and amenities and, you know, just, you know, what are you building? Because they're, I mean, this one is nice. It's got granite, it's got garages, it's got high-end appliances, it's a good one. So, you know, he's doing a good job building quality units, but he's not making any money for the first couple of years, and if rents stay flat, it could be indefinite.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for Mr. Bennett. Why is it so difficult, in your opinion, why is it so difficult for downtown housing projects to be built without tax exemptions for urban renewal funds or use of public tax money?
The costs are higher, substantially higher, because normally, you're trying to build some additional density over and above a suburban project, the two-story walkout that's been described. And so, and then you have, the fire code is different, and so you're, and it's basically an elevator project, and you have to provide for some parking. So there can be a wonderful opportunity, but, you know, the costs are significantly higher.
Land costs included, or no?
Well, most of the land is owned commercially, and I think you can improve your position by, if you can do a successful mixed-use project, because you can, at street level, which we all want, if you can have a commercial use activity, and that will help you cover the costs of building the residential part of it up. But the difference in costs makes, again, makes a substantial difference in the feasibility. It is fair to say that rents have not caught up with costs anywhere. I mean, they talked about Coburg, Coburg Road is the best chance, has the best chance, and people are trying to build out ahead of the market because interest rates are so low.
Ah-huh.
And they think they can recover substantially down the road, so they may take a break-even or even a project that costs some in the first two or three years. But generally, rents have not caught, they're moving up, and vacancy rates are relatively low, but they haven't caught up yet. Well, then that just adds to the problem downtown, because, you know, even if it can be accomplished on a lower-cost base in the suburbs in a good- good market, it still provides, you know, it presents some difficulty downtown. The only thing I'd add to that, and it wasn't part of your question, is that, I mean, we need housing downtown very badly. I mean, we have the makings of some reasons to be downtown and to come downtown. A lot of it's food and beverage, but there are other things as well, and we have some momentum. But, I mean, housing, you know, having a stronger housing component is very important in terms of continuing to make progress.
Well, I just, I mean, and I don't know much about it as you do or you do, but I'm looking at some of the developable lots downtown, and they seem to be relatively free of pre-existing buildings. It seems like it would be very easy to build a tower there, a residential tower with or without retail on the bottom, and provide parking, and, you know, you'd charge higher rents. But I just, I initially was thinking about removing downtown from the eligible MPT zone. I haven't quite made up my mind on that, but I think it should be expanded to other areas that could use improvements in housing and even the commercial portions if it didn't compete with other existing businesses. So, thanks, guys, for your-
There's another component in the downtown that he didn't mention, and that's parking. Most of the new stuff going on downtown is subterranean parking, which is very expensive versus surface parks.
Right, thank you.
George? Are you finished?
I'm done, yes.
Okay. Mike is next, and then Claire.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate, gentlemen, Mia, you all being here. We have some difficult decisions to make on this, and we really appreciate your advice and good information. For me, having the panel of you here serves to help with two or three really important things from my perspective. One, you've already kind of touched on with both of you, gentlemen, which is the conversation we often have at this table where a statement might be made that, well, we really don't need MPT because those developments would be built anyway without it. And I contend that, as you've said, I'm hearing you say that that's actually not true, that it's very much a needed incentive in order for us to get anything built that we'd like. And I really appreciate the point Mia was making in the larger sense that we have, we've already accepted that we're going to have at least 34,000 new people who need housing accommodated in the next 20 years. And this council has already decided that we're going to go from having that be in 30-some percent multi-unit housing to 45% for the entire city. So we need a great deal more multifamily housing than we have right now. So I'm hearing that affordability is a considerable issue. We're not going to eliminate MPT. I don't think the will exists in the body to do that, but we're going to hang a lot of things on that tree probably before we're done. My second concern is, I'd like to hear from you as much as possible of any of the things we have previously discussed adding to MPT as a consideration. I'd like to know from your perspective, what are the unintended consequences of us adding those type of requirements? Which ones would make it unaffordable? Which ones would make it practically an unusable incentive if the bar becomes too high to meet that particular requirement? And then lastly, I had also concerns around the issue of hiring more local folks since it's a local tax incentive. I know that that has a complexity to it. So one of the things I suggested after meeting with some folks was the idea of certified payroll and being able to verify after the fact if we had, whether it was percentage or however we measured it, specifically who was and wasn't a local employee as opposed to a local contractor. So I'd love to hear, just at first, hear some of those things addressed by you, gentlemen, if you are aware of some of the things we've talked about adding.
I'll speak to that a little bit. I think it comes down to cost of construction versus rents. And anything you hang on it is going to decrease that benefit to a potential developer. It may allow for the city to get something, you know, we want out of it in terms of higher quality construction or more parking or whatever you decide in that. But I think what it comes down to is the less of the incentive, the less is going to be built. I also think an unintended consequence of how it's been managed is that the redevelopment aspect of it is not working correctly because a developer does not know if they are going to get the exemption until they, you know, get council approval. I think it should be more of a, here's the criteria, if you meet it, you get it. And if that were the case, that would make redevelopment sites more attractive because people would know that if they redevelop this site, they would get this MPT rather than purchasing the site and then going through a process of maybe I get it, maybe I won't. And that creates risk on the developer. And anytime they have risk, they're not going to pay as much for that site. And they may not be willing to pay a price for that site that will purchase it because the existing improvements are creating some level of value. And presumably, the redevelopment value would have to be above the existing value for that to be redeveloped.
I can speak to the certified payroll. That's typically with a prevailing wage rate project is where we normally see that. It's quite a bit of effort for everybody to be involved in a certified payroll program. So I'm not sure that you would get a lot of benefit out of it, and it's kind of after the fact also. It's ongoing throughout the process because they're done weekly and then monitored weekly. But I'm not sure how that would, you know, if, I guess that would be kind of a monitoring piece if you were doing that, but the management piece of that would be really high. Since we already do that for prevailing wage rate projects, to try and impose that on a private wage project would create, I should back up a little bit. There's generally two tiers of contractors. There's residential contractors, and then there's the straight commercial contractors. The straight commercial contractors are very familiar with the prevailing wage rates, certified payrolls and all that. In the multifamily apartment world, we use a mix of commercial contractors and residential contractors. And the residential contractors have no idea what they're getting into when you start asking for certified payrolls. And the amount of effort would do that. It would increase their overhead significantly, aside from the whole learning curve of them trying to figure something like that out. It would take a lot of thought and a lot of effort to go down that road. You'd have to really seriously consider whether what you got out of it at the end of the day was worth all the effort you put into it. I'd suggest there's probably easier, better methods of doing that.
As I said earlier, I've never done a MPT project, but I've done projects that are very close calls. What I hope you will consider is that if you could be convinced that the analysis you were receiving was accurate, I mean, it's never going to be perfect, but if it were independently accurate and it showed you that the development could not make a reasonable return without a full MPT, that you would consider it. That if, in fact, it could make a higher return or there were some other more favorable considerations, certainly you could address that. But that, my view, and I'm repeating, is that housing is so hard to do downtown now that I believe you will find that your full consideration will be needed.
One of the things, oh, I'm sorry, Mia, were you going to jump in?
I can only say one thing that hasn't, but are we going to respond to that? Because you should do that.
Well, he just made me think. I have two other questions in 15 seconds, so I just wanted to get them out there, too. One of them is around land costs and those who've purchased years ago versus now, and how much is left and what's land cost likely to be in the near future for redevelopment? And the other is the regulatory environment, especially downtown. If you could change the regulatory environment in some way to make it less expensive, what would that be? There, I got my last two questions out now. Go ahead.
Obviously, I am not a MPT developer, but I want to speak to the financial reporting just because I have been told by at least one prospective developer that if you're going to require financial reporting, there is a concern that the city has to be able to put that information in a secure place. And if you are going to use it, I mean, it says here that it's only going to be sort of released in the aggregate, but there's a risk that if there are so few projects being reported, that it would be possible to figure out whose information that was. And I was told that it's conceivable that could put them at a competitive advantage because it gives others knowledge about how well the project is doing. And I hadn't thought of that before. But surely, there has to be some way that you can mask this. I know, like with employment statistics from the Oregon Employment Department, if they're giving you job data in a sector that there are so few employers in, they'll mask that and suppress it and won't release it. So it's just something to think about.
I could address the land value question. Land value is one of the hardest things to estimate, especially in a market where there are no land transactions for a similar highest and best use such as multifamily construction in the non-campus area. The way we have to estimate land value there is what's the value that's left over after the cost of construction and an appropriate profit level versus the market value at the end? And what I would say is, these places that haven't seen construction, the land value is close to zero as a multifamily development site. It would have a value as, you know, speculative value or a value maybe in some other alternative use. But what we're seeing, like Bill was saying, these people who have had these properties for a long time, they're looking at it like, I might have excess land here that's nonproductive, I'm not using it, and I'm going to build on it now while interest rates are low. And that's why we've seen a lot of, you know, these small infill type of things, it's things people have owned for a while that maybe they don't want to try to sell, and maybe they wouldn't be able to sell, but it's not productive to them now. And so they're taking advantage of low interest rates. And presumably, if there was a property tax exemption program, hopefully, they would take advantage of that, too.
I apologize, but what we're likely to see in the future in the way of land values currently-
Mike, you want to add something?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. Rob?
Can I answer you?
Please, please.
The experience we have downtown is that there are buildings sitting on the land now that may not be, that may be either very underutilized or underdeveloped. The person that owns the building doesn't think it's worth nothing, though. And so, you're trying to find a way to acquire the property, to redevelop it, when your redevelopment doesn't really assign any value to the improvements at all. So, for example, I mean, we manage the old Taco Time building where, that's now been redeveloped, it meant twenty years for the Roberts family. And I wouldn't have tried that. I mean, I'm happy that Steve Master tried that deal. I'm not quite sure how he did it because I wouldn't have tried it. It was such a terrible building. And I don't mean, I mean in terms of trying to reuse it. So when you're trying to figure out what you've paid for the land on a deal like that, it gets convoluted because the current owner isn't going to sell it to you for what the appraised value of the land is.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and sharing your expertise and perspective with us on this. So I just had some specific questions about some of the specific things that we've talked about at this table in terms of maybe additional requirements or aspects to add to the MPT program. And I apologize, I don't have my notebook with me, so I might not be able to ask in the detail I might like. But you talked a little bit about the financial reporting aspect. One of the things we'd heard about the Portland program is that there's, it seems like, much more required in terms of financial review and auditing. And so I wondered about some of your perspective on that and whether that, what kind of burden that might create or what the complications might be in fulfilling that. And I'm not directing that at anyone in particular.
We require on all loans, be it construction or refinance or purchase, annual reporting to the bank. We monitor loan servicing, and we want to see how the property is doing, is the cash flow going up, going down, are they hitting their expense projections or historic expenses? And we use that as simply to monitor our collateral. I don't think anyone would be opposed to providing that financial reporting. My question is, what do you do with it when you get it? I mean, because the project's already done, they've already got their MPT. So are you using it just as research for future considerations, for future applications? Or, I don't know.
Well, you know, we might put some kind of requirements on there that we then go back and look to see that they're fulfilled, and if they weren't, we might then take back the promise of the tax exemption.
No?
You know, accountability to the agreement if we decided to add that kind of layer to it. Anyone else want to speak to that particular question?
Yeah, I will. Anytime you do a 10-year discounted cash flow analysis, there's, it can be widely inaccurate. I mean, the inputs over 10 years, you know, from a discount rate to what interest rates are going to be even two years out, you know? Look at Capstone, for instance, you know? It can change something from feasible to non-feasible or non-feasible to feasible. I just think that there's, it's a very-
Inexact.
Yes, very inexact science, and I wouldn't rely on it. I mean, I think it's a more, I think the more accurate way to look at it is, is the project worth what it costs when it's done? One year, you know, we know what cap rates are on sales. You know, it's a way to look at it that's very simple and not, you know, which can be manipulated also, but I don't think quite as much as looking 10 years down the road. I don't know if that helps, you know, get where you want to be, but it's, it seems simpler to me.
Thank you.
I will answer to you if I could. I started out with this thinking the thing to do is to do a review and do a clawback if the project was more successful. And I just want to share my think, you know, where I went with that after talking to other developers about this is, first off, if you're talking about doing one that doesn't last 10 years, like say you give them a seven-year exemption, well, what happens if you do the audit and you find they should have gotten 10? Are you going to give them a rebate? If you're not, then there's a sort of fundamental unfairness if you can only clawback money but never give, you know, never give it back if it's needed. I also came to believe that there's sort of a futility, as he said, in trying to match up the final outcome with the original because there are these factors that are beyond the developer's control, like just where do you hit it in the business cycle? And also, I think although it's certainly true that many people wouldn't have a problem with reporting, that's not true for all developers. I know of at least one, you know, who is not comfortable with that. I think when you get into non-locals or large institutional investors that aren't used to doing that, they may have reasons why they don't want to do this. So I think instead of making it hard and fast, you have to do this, there should be some kind of flexibility where you don't wind up killing a project over the need to collect this data. That I'm fairly dubious about what you would do with the information. As I understand it, people are wanting to verify that when you give these MPTs to people that that was really needed and that it wasn't, you know, that it wasn't a giveaway that didn't need to happen. And I'm not sure that this is going to really answer that question. And it would certainly be unfortunate if you fixated on the couple instances where maybe someone didn't need as much as you gave them, but you're not focusing on, well, what about all the others who really needed 15 years of MPT to make it pencil, if that makes sense? So I would say before you get too deep into getting this information, be clear about what you're going to use it for when you get it.
Thank you. One of the other things we've been looking at is how we work towards inclusion of affordable housing. And we've talked at this table about maybe, instead of requiring that a percentage of the units be affordable, that we would put some money into an affordable housing fund that the city could then direct. And we'd heard from staff that there can be challenges around putting affordable units into certain projects and also securing the additional funding that might be out there, but how do you work that system? So I would also like to hear your perspective on that.
I think it's a good idea. As far as the developer putting, you know, a portion, a very small portion into the fund, it's going to detract- a very small portion into the, into the fund, it's going to detract from the value of the, of the MPT. I mean, it's going to offset some of the value of the MPT. But to include affordable housings, and these guys can speak to that better than I, I think to include affordable housing as a, so many units in a project, or whatever the rent levels, or how is it going to be subsidized, is problematic. Because you're going to have two different types of tenants, you're going to have two, two or more different rent levels. Some might have to be, the low-income might have to be ADA, more ADA compliant or whatever. So I kind of like the idea of putting a few dollars aside, you know, every month or whatever you come up with.
Anyone else want to speak to that?
I, I think that a fee to, to low-income housing or affordable housing would be a much more useful tool than, than including it in, in someone's project because a particular developer probably has a vision of their project and what they're trying to do. And affordable housing may not fit into that, and it may preclude them from actually building it. And, you know, some sort of a fee towards affordable housing and appropriate development would be a, a better choice.
Thank you. Another piece we've talked about is providing, either requiring or providing more of a tax break for projects that provide certain enhancements, whether those are safety, public safety improvements, bike ped enhancement, open space, garden space, other community benefits. And I would love to hear your thoughts on those kinds of additional requirements and/or incentives to extend the tax break further.
Well, I think that might be a good idea. Again, it's going to offset some of the benefit of the MPT. One thing I could mention is that I financed several infill projects, multifamily, just outside of MPT areas in the last several years. And what, what you find, it's very hard to measure, it's impossible to measure, but what you find is those projects are not of the quality that the MPT projects are. So you're already getting some of what I think you're referring to. Qualitying materials, you know, everything from, from carpet to siding to roofing and, and landscaping, and the whole, the whole works is going to be somewhat or slightly less, in my observation, outside of MPT than, than within MPT. So you're getting some of that, I think, already.
I'd have to agree with what Bill's saying. We've done projects both sides of that, and the MPT projects that we've done have certainly tended to be more sustainable. The developers are more interested in that, and I think you get much more community benefit out of those projects that have a higher quality of materials and more architectural thought into some of that, so.
Great. And then we talked, Councilor Clark brought up the question of the local contractors, and we'd also talked about minority-owned or women-owned businesses or contractors. Are you, any of you able to offer some strategies on how we might get towards that as a piece of this? I understand the difficulties. I also understand the nature of construction work, that it is often, people travel to where the, the work is. But we, I'd love some advice if you have any thoughts, strategies around that.
That's a tough one.
Okay.
You know, I've thought about it, and I don't have any great ideas. I think the whole monitoring thing is going to be a real management problem. You'd have to set some goals. And then it's a really fluid thing when you're out there trying to put your subcontractors and your material suppliers together, because it's a lot of moving pieces until that budget coalesces. And when you're actually doing the MPT and saying, okay, you're going to qualify for it, you just don't know. You're too early in the process of putting your budgets together and who all the players are in that piece to be able to say that you're going to require, you know, 50% of them local contractors, or 80% or, or 90%. You know, like I said, looking at our records historically, we are definitely in the 80% of local contractors here. But if you're talking about huge projects like Capstone, and, and we know that, you know, they went out of the state to bring in a drywall contractor, and none of us feels good about that, I'd suggest. You know, so if you're going to put some kind of criteria, it'd probably be Oregon-specific or something like that.
And then lastly, we've also talked about incentives or requirements around the adjacent commercial retail space that might be included with particular projects, and also the question of management of the facility. You know, I'm, I'm interested in the quality of that retail, or we talked about non-competitive with currently existing retail. So I would also love your thoughts on that piece.
You're asking whether you might have, have some conditions with respect to the mix of retail users in the project?
Yeah, or a greater tax break for including certain requirements in terms of what kind of retail would be there, what the, and/or, which is separate from the question of requiring some kind of onsite management or particular kind of management.
Well, I think regarding the mix, and then conditions generally, I mean, if, if the analysis you get that you believe in shows that a five-year MPT might be more appropriate than a 10, you, you might ask for some consideration with regard to, you know, environmental enhancements or materials or, in return for, say, six or seven years instead of five. If I, and this is just my experience, but if I presented a loan application to a bank that indicated that only certain retail, or certain retailers were excluded, say, or only, there's only certain list of retailers that could be included, for example, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, my application would not be successful. Because, you know, you're making this loan application, you're selling it on the basis that there is a market there, generally speaking, for your product. And if you limit that, I would have, myself, I would have difficulty getting through the underwriting, the bank underwriting.
I'll certainly, I'll certainly agree with that. And as you know, a lot of ground-floor commercial retail has had tough, it's been tough filling up. So if you restrict the tenant mix, or the tenant use, or what have you, it's just going to make that much, I think, perhaps more tougher. And from a lender's perspective, Rob's totally right, as far as the application and restrictions.
Thank you.
So it's getting on one. I have four in the queue. I have Alan, and Greg, and George Poling, and Betty in the queue. We're obviously not finishing this part in 45 minutes, and I want to give you as much time with this group as, as we can. So before we leave today, we'll kind of relook at the schedule for the MPT meetings to come. So let's have Alan right now.
Yeah, I too am interested in the local workers, especially if we give local public money, but that's already been covered. So I think you guys covered that well. Interesting to hear that rents are not sufficient to cover costs anywhere but around campus for multifamily. What is it about the campus area that's different? Why, why is it, why does that make it work?
Proximity to the campus.
So that makes the rents be able to be charged higher?
Yes.
And that's the, it's just proximity?
Yeah, I mean, I'll address that.
Proximity is like getting further, further away.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, rent is determined by the market, what the, what the tenants are willing to pay. It's not determined by what it costs to build a project or anything else. And so, you know, that, I mean, that's the starting point there. And the newest complexes, you know, short walking distance to campus with parking, you know, that have amenities and appeal, they get the highest rents. I mean, there are certain complexes that, we'll just talk numbers, that get close to $800 a bedroom for the very highest rents on campus. I would say current West University probably averages closer to 600 per bedroom in rent. And when you move out, you know, West Eugene, there hasn't been anything new built. But if we go all the way out to some of the newer stuff, we're probably closer to $450 per bedroom. You know, and John can speak to construction costs, but, but the costs aren't that much different. So the, the financial feasibility just doesn't add up in, in places other than campus.
So maybe $150 to $200 rent differential because of the proximity to campus?
Yeah, yeah. And another important aspect there, too, is the cost of the land. So in the campus market, you pretty much have to redevelop a site. So you have to, you know, tear down some old units to build new units. And, and that's an additional thing that's added on to the cost. So the costs, the total costs on campus are higher than the rest of, of, you know, the area. But if we're talking redevelopment and, you know, out west, West 11th, West 6th, you know, Trainsong, Bethel, wherever, you know, there's still going to be a, a need for some redevelopment. And, and I'm not, you know, I'm not sure if we're there yet.
Would you say something about potential movement from the Chase Village, the Martin-Luther King area, over, over the newer units in the university?
You mean in terms of what's been happening? And, yeah, well, there has been a, somewhat of a migration over the past five years, students, you know, wanting to live in the newer units on campus. And that's what's kept that, kept that demand. I think one thing we have to understand, as a, as a rental market in Eugene, you know, there's close to 25,000 students on campus. I've surveyed West, West and South University, all the multifamily zone property, there's only close to 7,000 bedrooms in that area. And you add to that what, what the university houses, there are a lot of students living all over Eugene and Springfield. And that's, that's a large component of our, of our, you know, rental market in Eugene and Springfield outside of campus. And as more is being built on campus, I think we're, you know, sucking some of those kids back to camp, the campus area. And, and what we've seen in the past, in the, in the late 90s and early 2000s when other units were built, we did see vacancy in the whole market. But as the economy came back, it pushed those kids back into the market. So I don't think you can really separate campus from non-campus because it's really intermixed.
Yeah, thanks. The financial reporting requirement, I want to touch on that. And I want to try to get your sense of how, how much of a problem that is, and, and if you have any ideas about how to make it work. And the problem is that we just can't tell if MPT was a good deal or not. We can't tell if, if it was a giveaway or if it was necessary. And so the thought is, is that we would use that information to be able to go back and see whether or not that's true. And secondarily, if it is true, then there's excess profits to be made by a developer because the analysis was inaccurate, that we would put a, a share of the upside kind of clause in there that said, like Portland has done, which said, over 10%, the city would share 25% of the, the excess profits above 10%, and the developer would get 75. So if there was, it turned out that it was a good deal, and, and then the city would get some of that money back. But to do that, you need the financial reporting requirements. Is there a way to do that, to keep it confidential, to, to still get at that information for those two purposes and make it work?
Well, as I met, as I mentioned, and I think every bank's the same, that, that we require annual reporting. Again, we don't really do anything with it, other than we analyze it, we monitor it, just to make sure the investment is, is going well. So the information is actually there. And any project that has bank financing is going to have to go through that same thing. So it's already there, and it's already being provided to the, to the lender. Now, what you do with it, or how, how much of a return or whatever, that's, that's up to you guys.
And I kind of liked what Mia said about having, looking at this 10 years out, you know, you're only going to share if it's in excess. What if, you know, what if it's a shortfall? Because we don't know what rents are going to do 10 years out. We don't know if there's going to be a CD that can be added on to sewer expenses that are going to go straight to the landlord. I mean, there's, you know, there's all sorts of expense items and income items that are really, you know, we can project them, but it's not going to be accurate. And there's risk involved with those projections. And to only, you know, to have, to have a program only take the upside of that risk and not address the downside, you know, it's going to be a, another stumbling block for people implementing the program.
I think you also have to consider if the property gets sold two or three times, and, you know, some REIT buys it, and then you have, you know, multinationals involved and trying to get information out of them, and they put it in their portfolio. It gets really complicated from that perspective, I'd suggest, how you would follow that trail and what it would take to do that. So maybe Portland figured it out, but it would be a challenge, I'd suggest.
I have a little different view. The, in our case, the lender always requires financial information every year. I mean, we, we do everything from tax returns to the financial reporting pro forma for how the project is. And we're used to that. I mean, we're in the management business. So, I mean, we're doing it not only for our own projects, but other projects as well. So I guess my view is that it's more important for me that you believe, if I were doing a project, that you believe that it was worth doing. And so that's why I think having some sort of way to analyze the information at the beginning from somebody you actually believe makes a, makes a big difference to me. And once you believe it, then, then you, and if, and if your criteria is that the return cannot exceed some number, and it ought to be a fairly generous number, given the risk involved generally, you can look at, you can look at that information. I would be really careful about comparing Portland with Eugene. Just, I've, I've made that mistake many times, not, not just Portland, but Eugene and Corvallis and all, you know. And so I, I just, from experience, would be, I'd be very, very careful. But, but I, I think that the information is available to you.
Mr. Morris, I have this question for you. Isn't, isn't the calculation of loan-to-value ratio and, and projects that end up being, in your words, underwater, there's a lot of factors that go into that, but isn't one of them the amount of equity that the developer puts into the project? And, and how does that work? And is there like a standard rule about how that?
Well, there was, there was with, with Liberty Bank and Home Federal Bank, yeah. And that's referred to loan-to-cost ratio versus loan-to-value ratio. Our rule of thumb typically on new construction, on, on pretty much anything, be it commercial or office, retail, or whatever, was a 75% maximum loan to value. And that's stabilized value. So once projects build, especially apartments, it's going to take some time, or shopping centers, whatever, to lease up. So once it leases up, that's, that's the value. And the other's cost. And our maximum typically, we made a few exceptions, but our maximum typically was 80% of the total project cost. And that's everything. That's land, that's interest reserve, it's soft cost, it's financing, it's architectural, the whole thing. So 75 loan to value, 85, or 80 loan to cost was, that was our rule of thumb.
So that means 20%?
20%.
Equity portion, right?
Right.
Does it tend to ever go beyond that? Say, 25 or 30%?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And so it's, that's kind of a range. So how much equity the developer puts in makes, could make the, it more profitable?
Yeah. If they want to borrow less money and put more equity in, that's great with us.
It doesn't make it more profitable, though.
No, no.
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 Might make it more feasible.
Right.
Feasible.
Right.
Therefore...
Rob can probably, a tester, agree that, I mean, leverage is, is a good thing for most developers. So they're, they're using our money at, today, in the very low, you know, threes, fours, fives, and assuming that they're going to get a higher return than what they're paying us. So. But there are cases, in fact, Coburg Road, the 20 units we're doing now, is a, a good example of substantial hard equity, including the value of land. The, the land is included as a cost at market value, regardless if they've had it for 30 years. Yeah.
Right. In every circumstance, it would be different. Back to this affordable housing and comparing to the Portland market that Mr. Bennett was talking about, having a MPT project be partially affordable housing and partially regular, my understanding is there's none of, none of those have ever been built in Eugene. There's very few in Portland, but their market's pretty different. And so why is this problematic? You all touched that that's problematic, but why? Can you be more specific?
Well, yeah, I'd be specific in that, like I said, you know, a vision of a project, like maybe, you know, someone wants a project on Coburg Road like that, and, and they've built all two and three-bedroom units that have vaulted ceilings and, and it's not, it would just, you'd, you'd be subsidizing the, the affordability portion of that. And that would be a direct offset to the, to the MPT. As a developer... As a developer of a project like that, I would rather pay a fee and develop my units how I, how I want them and a vision I want and, and pay the fee. I think that, and also from a, from a manager, I'm not a manager, and, you know, you can speak about that, but you, just, you know, ensuring the affordability of the tenants is another step in the management process that some managers may not be set up for.
The affordable housing projects that we're, that we have either developed or are managing, almost all involve children, families with children. And it's, you know, the projects that are market rate, particularly if you're doing above-average units, don't really welcome children. I mean, in the sense, and not purposely, but I mean, they just, they just generally don't. We all try to adhere to fair housing and, you know, do it with a straight face, seriously. But from a practical point of view, most suburban housing projects, market rate housing projects do not, do not include a lot of families. They just do not get, because most families live in a duplex or a rental house or a very low-density setting, where maybe there's a yard, or you could have a dog, or, you know, you can actually have a family. And so, they don't, they don't particularly go to it. You could, you can do, you could easily do affordable senior housing, but the, but the demand for senior conventional housing is very low because of all the specialized senior housing projects that are available in the community. When we, when we did the Benton Hotel project in Corvallis, I mean, we did 50 senior housing projects in a mixed-use deal with 30,000 square feet. The residential part was, was extreme, very, very strong in the beginning, 25 years ago, and over a long period of time, it has diminished considerably because of all the other senior options. So, the other thing is amenities. I mean, you generally try to do different kind of amenities for conventional rental housing projects. Then when we did Coburg Road, 1121 Coburg Road, we, in order to, in order to meet the affordable housing requirements, we couldn't do dishwashers or disposals or any, any amenities at all, whether, if we were, if we had been doing a conventional project, we would have done all those things.
We struggled with how to set the fee, what the amount would be, and how to, how to do it. Any thoughts about that, what appropriate fee might look like and how we would get it?
What kind of a fee?
For the affordable housing contribution upfront. Or it could be over time. Somebody suggested that, that was an interesting idea.
Well, if we were, if we were, if we were applying and you had instituted a fee, we would include that fee into our cost. And in order to attract capital to the project, we would try to get the same return that we would have gotten without the fee with, with the fee. And if we could do that, then we could raise capital for the project and actually do it. So, it's a function of doing the analysis. It might be helpful to do it over time as opposed to all at once, because, because you're trying, you know, you've got all these upfront costs. But generally speaking, it would be, it would be a cost as if you were buying lumber.
I agree with, completely with that analysis.
Greg, you're next.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate all of you coming out this afternoon to discuss this. This is a really important issue. I want to get out of the weeds for a minute and get to a much more forest-like level here. One of the reasons why we're at this table is because there is a perception in the community, not just in the regular community, but the business community as well, outside of the downtown area, that the way that MUPD is constructed right now is inherently unfair. How would you respond to that assertion? And in addition to that, and I may be a much more, more specific kind of question is, is from your perspective, any of you here sitting at the table, how would you craft a MUPD program that would ensure some level of rigor as well as some clearly defined tangible public benefit? Because what I hear people saying is, they want something they could reach out and touch, not just the building. So, how would you look at crafting that? And I got a couple other ones.
Yes, no question.
Want to say something about that?
Well, I think MUPD should be expanded greatly myself to spur development, multifamily housing, because we need it. Be it Willamette, or Coburg Road, or 99, or West 11th. I think that's the benefit, is providing good quality, high-density housing.
I, with the MUPD program, I think that one of the, you know, it will spur redevelopment, and I think that's, you know, that is a tangible benefit. If we have substandard housing removed and, and quality housing put in its place, that is a tangible benefit on its own. You know, I understand the, I understand the criticism it's got, especially in the West University area, because, you know, of it being a giveaway in certain situations. But the way the program is, is run, you know, all the low-hanging fruit goes first, and that's, and that's pretty much gone. You do a MUPD and you get a vacant site, there's going to be more benefit for the developer on a vacant site than one where they have to remove, you know, four substandard units that may have been worth $200,000. And so, to try to craft a program that, that treats everything equal, it's going to be very difficult. And I, and I don't, and I don't know how you would craft that program to, to do this. But in terms of, you know, redevelopment, I think, you know, one thing we do need to watch out for, and I haven't even heard spoke about, is, is like, you know, in the university area, we're getting, we're getting overbuilt. I mean, we had, you know, we had vacancy there this fall, and there's, you know, thousands of new bedrooms coming. You know, we're hoping that students will move from elsewhere into there. But, you know, how does that affect the, you know, the local contractor and the local labor if we create a situation where, say, we build, you know, 1,200 bedrooms at Capstone and then another 500 off Franklin? You know, are we going to be putting, you know, is it a feast or famine type thing? Are we going to be putting, you know, certain people out of work because of, you know, a lack of sustainable employment there? And I, and I think that that goes to the, the cap you were talking about of how many units are eligible, and there may be a review of it. And I think that that's a, I think that that's something that's reasonable to look at and on an ongoing basis and see if we are getting overbuilt or how it's going forward. Because if it's, you know, just out there indefinitely, you know, we could get, we could be hurting ourselves, too.
Well, let me ask it a different way. What components do you see as being the least prohibitive in terms of us shaping a program that would give both the developer and the community optimal benefit?
I keep looking at you.
I will.
Well, my view is that downtown is the most important part of the community. I mean, that sounds very self-serving, because I'm here every day, but I really do believe that. I believed it when I was on the council and, and for many years, because I don't want to live someplace that doesn't have a, an active viable downtown. I just, I don't, I don't want, I don't, I've been to a lot of places that have great suburbs, but, so, I'm, I'm, I think that the community has to believe that, too, Greg. I mean, I think the community has to believe that downtown is important enough so that helping create a way to, to reach those goals is, is worth it in and of itself. If you can achieve some other goals along the way reasonably, fine. But the basic goal, the basic premise ought to be that down, that the viability downtown, the community helping to improve it, offering incentives, is worth it.
Go ahead, Mia.
I said earlier that I thought that you need to be really careful to describe the projects that you want, and I think that's the key to this. If Eugene has a vision of the city that everyone wants to live in, then this program needs to be very tightly aligned with that, so that you're not subsidizing things that are harmful to neighborhoods, that you're not doing something that's actually against the community's vision. And that's part of your answer, what is the community benefit, is if this program can help create, bring the vision that we had for Eugene to reality, then that's, the creation of that structure is actually the part of the public benefit. I think that the perception of unfairness can be when you have MUPD going to projects that didn't really need it, like, say, really close-in student housing. If you didn't need to do that and you didn't withdraw the MUPD soon enough, then that's, that's a mistake the city can learn from in the future so that you don't do that again. You may have to withdraw it so you don't get overbuilt. There's another public benefit, I think, in if you look at, if MUPD can cause certain, certain types of development to be built that otherwise wouldn't, and I'm thinking of the example of the Core Campus project, it's been said that, well, what if you got a gas station there instead? After the MUPD's over, if you can compare the tax, the taxes that are coming in with the Core Campus project versus the gas station, it's a tremendous difference. So, there's, there's a clear financial payoff there if this program can trigger a fundamentally different kind of development.
And actually, you teed me up for my last question here. And that is, is that a number of us, I think all of us, have received communication from various parts of the community concerning the adherence or the alignment of our current land use planning with, you know, the details or precepts of MUPD and a project being built. And so, my question is, is, you know, after the tax exemption is granted and the project goes into development, a number of people have, have asked me is, how do we, how do we assure that that project is consistent and aligned with plans such as the Metro Plan and, and other planning documents and tools that are in, in play here?
You mean, you want to know if it's consistent with the comprehensive plan? I think that that, I mean, normally, comprehensive plan compliance is implemented through code compliance. You don't actually take a project and compare it to the actual city comprehensive plan.
Self-evident.
Yeah, but you, I think you need to make sure that your codes are such that if the project complies with the codes, that that is a demonstration of compliance with the plan. And if you need more regulations, then do that. I would, I would never rely on your comprehensive plan to be the, the document that guides the details of construction of a project.
George?
Well, I'd just like to take a minute to express how I really appreciate the panels coming to the meeting today and bringing their expertise forward and actually allowing us to get information from the people that deal with this in a professional manner on a day-to-day basis. It's really enlightened, I think, a lot of us here at the table. I really don't have any questions, other than maybe to the city manager. We do have a proposed motion, but I think we should go with option four, and that's to continue the discussion.
And we talked about that earlier.
Before we have a, a public hearing.
Send it come and talk to us.
All right. And just to kind of sum up, some of the things that I heard that have really kind of struck a chord with me is, is Mr. Dingman, your "if you build it, they will come" philosophy of, you know, if you build it and you meet the criteria, then you will get the exemption. I think that's a great idea. There is one thing that I heard by a couple of people, and that's, as in reference to the MUPD, and that's keep it simple. And I think, we don't want to overthink what we're doing, we want to keep it simple for everybody involved. Also, the, the local resource availability that, Mr. Texter, that you brought up, that concerns me. Not only not being able to employ our local workers, but why don't we have enough? And perhaps that may be a question better aimed at the education system. You know, not everybody needs to go to college, and not everybody can go to college, and maybe the education system needs to kind of step in a little bit to help with some of the, the, I guess for a lack of better word, the blue collar, the blue-collar jobs. And then, a couple of people also mentioned that without the MUPD, the downtown redevelopment's not going, not going to occur the way it should. So, again, like I said, I don't have any questions, and I'm looking forward to further discussions. And again, thank all of you very much for coming in today. And, you know, if and when we ever do get to the point of having a public hearing, I'm, I wouldn't mind hearing your comments about that public hearing, if you have the availability to do so. Thank you.
Betty?
Thank you. Do I get the last word?
I move to extend five minutes.
Second?
All in, in favor, please indicate.
Now, you've got a little extra time.
Your post, so extending.
In opposition, so it's seven?
It'll only take two minutes.
Seven in favor and one in opposition.
I will just take no more time than, less, less time than everyone else. I have one question, but I have some comments. Well, I agree with Mr. Bennett that downtown is extremely important, and that's why, that's the only time I voted for MUPD is in the heart of downtown. But I think perhaps we've done enough, that there's enough stimulation, and that people are going to want to be downtown. And I think the main thing, if we can make our community the kind of place that people want to be, that's what we should do. And whatever we could do to help the education system would be good for that. But I think it's not our obligation to make any project profitable, or to, or to remove the risk. That's what being in development or any kind of business involves, is some risk. You take some risk and you get some benefit from it. As for may, having better projects, I think my neighborhood would be better if we all got a 10-year tax break. We could make it look a lot better. We could make it be more environmentally good, and, but the city exists on taxes. And the reason that a lot of people were really angry about what we just tried to do was because they know we're giving tax exemptions to people. Those are my comments. My question for Mr. Morris, are you familiar with inclusionary zoning, places that have it?
No, I'm not.
But they, they do have, well, downtown Boston has a lot of it, and the state of New Mexico, and there are other places, where the lower-cost housing is, is mixed in, which I think is the best way to do it, rather than having isolated low-income places. And I, I don't know the details of how they do it. I think they have fewer amenities. For example, if you have a building with apartments, some of them could be without garbage disposals, without plush carpet, without the fancy lighting fixtures, perhaps, mixed in, not in one section. But that's a way to, and I think that is much better than giving money for projects, in my opinion. But it's, it's done widely, and we were, I was, been talking about it ever since I joined council, which is a while back. And I don't know whether it was in response to my, I doubt it was in response to my remarks, but the legislature then passed a law saying we can't have inclusionary zoning in Oregon, which I think we should try to get repealed. But there are ways, and when there've been housing projects in these places that have it, there could be houses that are smaller, mixed in with the others, maybe without the double driveway, maybe without the two-car garage. But it's a much better way, in my opinion, to have affordable housing, and what's wrong with that?
What's wrong with that? Well, we've discussed the pros and cons, I think, of, to some degree, of including low-income in a market rate project. It's, there's, there's pros and cons.
But if you spend less on it, on those units, I'm thinking.
Well, you've got management issues, you've got compliance issues, you might have ADA issues, and you're building maybe two levels of quality right next to each other.
Thank you.
So, I, too, want to thank you all very much for coming today and spending this time. and spending this good hour and a half with us. We appreciate it very much. And I guess the only comment I personally would make is, the only reason to use MUPD, to me, is for us as a city to get what we want where we want it. I mean, that's the only reason I see to do it. And so, and in order for us to get what we want where we want it, somebody's got to do it. And that's you. So that's how that fits together for me. So it would seem totally wrong to use any kind of tax break to get something that you don't want where you don't want it. So that just doesn't make any, so I think this is really an exercise in taking a tool and using it very carefully to try to achieve what you can't achieve in any other way, and to try to be fine-tuned enough about it that you really do use it in that very specific way to move the things that we, like when we have our discussion about Envision Eugene, we talk about what you, we say we want to have happen along our transit corridors. They may not happen easily, and so then you have to apply some tools to try to help those things happen. It is something that we're trying to do for ourselves and our community. And that's the whole point, in my view. And I think you've helped us a lot with this conversation. We have a lot further to go, it's apparent to me, but thank you very much.
Sure.
With that, we'll, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Oh, yes, John's going to come up here and talk with us.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just real quickly, what, I guess what I would suggest is, rather than having a public hearing and extending the MUPD ordinance coming up in May, what I would suggest is, we could have that public hearing actually as late as July, mid-July. What that would require is to extend your suspension of the MUPD ordinance, rather than 30 days, but for 60 days. And then the idea would be is to be able to approve a new MUPD ordinance prior to you going on break. And so essentially, what that would mean is, is by August 1st is when you would consider taking action on a new MUPD ordinance. So what we would do is come back with a suspension ordinance of 60-days extension, as opposed to just 30 days, what was talked about before. That would go to the public hearing.
Okay.
Let me just make sure I clarify, on the public hearing for the suspension would still be in May 28. The public hearing for a new MUPD ordinance would be in July, as opposed to June.
George?
Well, I feel we're going to need at least two more work sessions, because our work, that was interesting, having the panel and everything, but we never got to discuss the material that we received yesterday, so.
This would give you a chance to have additional work sessions.
I figure probably at least two more, so, yeah. As long as we can do that before the public hearing.
Ready, okay? All right, with that, thank you.